I'd like to call to order the June 10, 2025, meeting of the Nelson County Board of Supervisors. If we could please stand for a moment of silence. Mr. Rutherford, can you please sign the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started this afternoon, Grace Meyer is going to introduce a new employee that we have with the county.
Thank you. Good afternoon. We're excited to have Ms. Brittany Niemeyer joining county staff as the Assistant Director of Tourism and Economic Development. She comes to us from Devil's Backbone Brewing Company, where she worked as their social media coordinator, communications manager, and most recently their brewery experience manager. She holds a bachelor's degree in communications and hospitality management from East Carolina University. Ms. Niemeyer has extensive experience in digital marketing, social media management, and event planning, which will be instrumental in elevating Nelson County's economic development and tourism initiatives. She joined us on May 12, and she's hit the ground running. Please join me in welcoming Ms. Niemeyer as Assistant Director of Tourism and Economic Development.
Thank you, Grace. Thank you, Brittany. Welcome. Okay, next on the agenda are public comments. And just as a reminder, you come up to the podium and address the Board of Supervisors. You have three minutes to speak. Dr. Ligon will be timing you out. If you get to the two-and-a-half-minute mark, she'll let you know. If you get to the three-minute mark, she'll let you know. And at that point, I will encourage you to wrap up what it is you're talking about. If you're representing a group, you have to identify that group, and then you may have up to five minutes. So first on the list is Debbie White. Please give your name and address.
Good afternoon, Board Supervisors and County Administrator.
Can you give your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm Debbie White and have had property on Glass Hollow Road and been part of the affected community for over four years. I come with a simple request today that you appropriate the entire fiscal year 2026 school budget that was approved by the School Board on March 13, was discussed in a joint board meeting on March 20, and then presented both as part of the County Administrator's balanced budget presentation on May 13, and advertised for the public hearing on that same day, as was approved by the School Board. I have recently retired as Chief Financial Officer for Virginia School Division, with over 20 years' experience in local government finance. I also moderated a biweekly PUGO meeting with a large number of school finance directors from all across the state for over the last four years. I was pleased to be able to follow the budget process here in Nelson County for the first time this year and appreciate all the thoughtfulness and care put into the budget by both the county and the school's administration staff. Elected officials for both the School Board and Board of Supervisors have done an excellent job discussing the budget and acting on behalf of the citizens of the county. I have also really appreciated the open and civil communication that appears to be happening between the two staffs and boards, which is not always the case across the state. Had lots of discussions about that in those biweekly meetings. However, I was surprised that the school budget was still being discussed as late as May 30, when employment contracts for next year had already been, had already appropriately been released. Best practices across the state were followed by Nelson County's school leadership when they set salary increases strategically to retain and recruit the best talent they could within a limited budget for salary increases. School personnel are currently in a very competitive environment that requires contracts to be signed by late May or early June to avoid risking the loss of their best staff. And with over 40 superintendent positions open this year across the state, the School Board was wise to retain Dr. Hester with both a 3% cost of living increase and a small merit increase. Dr. Hester is doing an outstanding job for Nelson County students and their families. Again, I ask that you appropriate the full school budget for fiscal year '26. Over the years, Nelson County has invested a lot in their excellent public schools, which are the single largest employer for the county, and I am proud of that use of my taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Frank Clark.
My name is Frank Clark. I live at 207 Reed Street, Livingston, Virginia. Today, I come before you with one simple question. Is it possible to pull the phones together to put dash cams in all of the police cars? As a county, we should be able to, you know, trust the police with what they've got going on. As of two weeks ago, I got pulled over, they don't have dash cams. They only cut their body cams on after a stop has been made. So I'm looking to you guys to be able to do something with the budget and get them some cameras. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Edith Napier.
Good afternoon. I'm Edith Napier, 43, Napier Loop, Arrington, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of the Juneteenth Celebration Committee. First and foremost, I want to thank you all for your support that you provided to the Juneteenth Celebration. And I believe I put a flyer like this beside each of you. We are cordially inviting you to come and personally join us for the Juneteenth Celebration on the 22nd of June. Our theme is educate, commemorate, and celebrate. And we are honoring the legacy and power of HBCUs, historical black colleges and universities. They have contributed much to the growth and development of this country. So this year's Juneteenth Celebration will feature a panel discussion with alumni from various generations, sharing their lived experiences at HBCUs. Alumni and representatives from HBCUs available on-site with youth and to connect with youth and families. We will have food and food vendors, and a live step show by the Divine Nine. So we are asking you to come and be with us. We are raising funds, and we will have a silent auction there. The items that will be there to, that you can bid on. Again, let's come together, let's educate, let's commemorate and celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waterfield?
I'm homeless.
Please give your name and address.
You just said my name, Elwood Waterfield. I'm homeless, and you're well aware of the reason I'm homeless. This county stole my land because I'm a whistleblower on corruption in this county. When Mark Embry said at his last town hall meeting, "You were there, Mr. Rutherford," and I think you were there, Mr. Reed, "and y'all should all be calling for his resignation." What y'all done to me? The truth's gonna come out. Slap, it's called slap, strategic litigation against public participation. There are four goals. First, they demonize you. They say the horriblest things they can think of about you. Then they intimidate you with charge after charge after charge. Then they isolate you. And in my case, you took my driver's license first, so I had to walk everywhere I went. Then you stole my home. And the very last step is to destroy you. They put me in jail December 11 of 2019. For two-and-a-half hours, I had urine and feces thrown at me. This was all arranged by our Commonwealth attorney, Lisa Bryant, which she shouldn't have been gone a long, long time ago. What y'all are doing to keep crooked cops here in this county, you're gonna be held accountable for. May God have mercy on all of you evil souls.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I have on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, if not, we will close the public comments and move on to the rest of the agenda. First, we have the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, if there's no one who wishes to discuss any of the resolutions, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Parr seconded that. And let's have a roll call.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Okay. For presentations, Mr. Brown's here from VDOT, the Virginia Department of Transportation. And it's good to see you again.
Thank you, Chairman Reed. Just have a few things to report on this month. Some items that you all brought to my attention. Mill Ridge, Mill Ridge Road Drive, we are still working on that, I think. Mr. Parr, did you send me that? Somebody sent me that. Jesse, you sent me that. We're still working on that. We've done a lot of work up here, ditching, widening. We need asphalt mowing now, and that will be up at a mall. Our space will be up at a mall, and hopefully we'll finish that up. And I think it's gonna be a much, much better situation. Our secondary mowing contractor is mowing in Nelson County. We do plan on starting four-lane primary mowing this coming Monday to 6th. I know we did some spot mowing, but this will be going back and doing complete mowing on all the four lanes. We got another little project I hope to start hopefully next week on Route 29, southbound lane at Davis Creek Road. We're gonna do a little site distance improvement project right there as part of our, one of our things that we recognize as something we could do to improve the safety at that intersection. So hopefully that will happen pretty soon. Last month, we had a concern about the puddles on Diggs Mountain and Arrington Road. I've been told they were filled. I did ride down and look at them, so I think they're filled. I saw where they filled some. I did look at lonesome pine. I didn't see anything wrong with it. I just, road's in great shape. Don't know what your constituents saw, but that road's, unpaid road is in very good shape. The beach grove, we got a, there was a drainage issue where water runs across really. We kind of, we're following up on that with the, with the, looking at some drainage over there and a pipe. We've got a little sucker placed in the road over there that we're investigating. Hopefully it's nothing major. But we gotta, we gotta get to the bottom of that. We're still working on our 151 slope repair. We're up toward Avon. We have completed the rock bench that we had to put in there. And now our, our geotechnical contractor's coming in, and they should begin the soul nailing this week. They immobilized some. I think they'll be in there for a couple of weeks, and hopefully we can wrap that up pretty quick. But that was a, that was a pretty substantial project. It was pretty substantial. So that's kind of what I have today. Any, any, any other items?
I know you mentioned mowing's getting ready to start. Just make sure in the, I don't know how long it takes to do the four lanes. So just make sure that the area along the Heritage Center gets done before the weekend of the 20th for the Juneteenth 20-
Okay, so we've cut that area-
Juneteenth Celebration.
We've cut that area once, but I don't know.
Yeah, if you could just take a look at it, I think it might need a little attention before the 20th.
Thank you.
Luke?
I have sent you an email about a discussion that you had in Gladstone.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Hopefully the wheels are sort of turning.
We are still working on that. I have one of my engineers doing a full drainage study on that, on that one pipe. And I have met him down there. I'm not gonna get in, you know, he put a lot of man about the history, and a lot of that goes back to 1985 flood, when it, when the roads were washed away and they would fill back. And I have conveyed to him that, you know, I can do maintenance. I do not, I'm not ready to reconstruction. And, but we had a good meeting here a few weeks ago, so hopefully we can follow through and get this drainage study completed pretty quickly. But we are gonna probably have to close the road, and we're sending everybody on 60 down Alice Creek, because we're gonna, we're gonna have to close that road, 656 going into Gladstone when we get into replacing that pipe.
Thank you.
All right, so on Laurel, when we've had these intermittent rains, 639 over towards the Route 6 portion, we've had a couple culvert pipes that are frequent flutters. They get clogged up and floods over 639. One close to Route 6, I don't know if I remember seeing that one in the recent rains, but there's one pipe in an elbow near address 3917. 3917 Laurel. There's a culvert near them in an elbow.
3917.
Laurel, yep. That one's been a recurring flooding situation. It's been a slow trickle-in, too, so I'm sure the guys have had some struggles with that one. You've also indicated that Rockfish River Road towards 29, where we had the big floods last year where the pipes were ripped up, you had plans to get that pipe replaced.
That structure.
Yes.
Yeah, that's still on the, that's still gonna happen.
You don't have a timeframe yet?
I don't have a timeframe on that. We, I don't know if we've got that structure. I thought we were gonna get it, had received it, but that was a special design. But it's, it's gonna happen. I just, I don't know, I don't know exactly when.
Is it probably gonna be, is that, and also related towards the drainage over at the Chicken Coop Way, where the pipe's supposed to be going? Did you have a timeframe on that one yet?
Not yet, no, not yet. But that is a, that is a very high priority for us to finish that and get that drainage back in order.
Great. All right, then the last one. I know there's been some discussions with engineering about 29 speed change. Have you seen any of those exchanges?
Which-
Would it came from Mr. Wilson? You interacted with the sheriff related towards?
The only speed study right now that hasn't been completed is the speed limit south of Livingston. It was requested to be a 45, extend the 45 one down to Stevens Cove. I've been told by, I keep asking, I asked our traffic engineer, "When are you gonna get that?" And they said, "Well, it's done, it's done, it's done." They just said, "I've finished it." I think what we're gonna see, I don't know if we're gonna get a 45, but I think they're gonna, they might do an intermittent 50 mile per hour speed limit. Leave the existing 45 where it's at. But I haven't seen the final recommendations, and I, and I have not concurred with them either, because I've been telling them that we need to extend that 45 out close to Stevens Cove to capulate the, slow the traffic down for the AMs leaving, leaving the station.
And then last piece was related towards the corner front main during the crosswalks. I know you guys had engineers out that one day.
I've been, I have followed up on that a couple of weeks ago. They are, I've not got that recommendation back, but it's my understanding that we are gonna, we're gonna pick crosswalks and use the existing ADA curb cuts. Because that was the concern, was the alignment and location of the ADA curb cuts. But I, but I don't think we can move them to get them closer to the corners, because, you know, you have to meet the ADA requirements. And most of those curb cuts are fairly new when we did the little project on Main Street. We put them, you know, we had to put them where we could meet the road design standards and with the grades of 101, the 481 slopes and also. I don't, I think where they're at is the best that we could do and meet the, you know, the standards. So I look for that to happen. I look for them to, I look for them to give me that recommendation pretty quick. We have had that discussion in the last few weeks.
Okay, or keep me posted on that one. And other than that, as it relates to the streetscape improvements that VDOT's administering on, in Livingston, when they did the painting, some of the painting got on some pretty nice rock work. What is that stuff called, Jessica?
Uh, flag.
Flagstone rock? It was just, when, I believe it was Miss Utility or someone in that realm was doing some spraying to identify utility lines. And they sprayed over some nice stuff, so if they could be cognizant of that in the future.
In front of, in front of the church.
Yeah, in front, the church right over here on Front Main, or Front Street.
What, what, what would we be marking?
I believe you were marking utilities for the preliminary engineering for the sidewalks.
For the town.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Just tell them to be cognizant of that in the future. Try not to, you know, really nice stuff. We're advocates of identifying the utility, just help us out some, okay? Other than that, I think that's all I have.
Okay.
What do I have?
I'm just thinking of, Miss Utility is the one marking that.
I was assuming it was Miss Utility, but it would've been by virtue through VDOT. So if you could just send a mention when they call in the order, it'd be great.
Okay. Speaking of crosswalks, I want to alert you to something that's gonna be happening soon, which is that in Ellis Ford, a new breakfast lunch area, Belties is going to be opening up very soon. And that means they're gonna start having not just vehicular traffic, but pedestrian traffic that are gonna want to use that facility. And right now, there's no crosswalk that connects both sides, that crosses 151 from the shopping center or any of the development there to the other side. And I'm thinking that it would be, am I right, am I right about that? We're gonna, I think we're gonna need a way for people to be able to cross the street from one side to the other once that opens. Yeah.
They've got a pretty darn big parking lot.
They've got a big parking lot, but, you know, as people are in one place and go to the other, it's easier to walk across the street than it is to drive.
I don't know that we would paint a crosswalk because you have to, pretty much have to designated entrances, entrances and egresses.
Right, and sidewalk and curb cuts, things like that.
What we may have to do, Chairman Reed, is we may have to put up some, if, if the pedestrian traffic develops, we may have to put up some, like a pedestrian zone or something in there with signage rather than a crosswalk.
Whatever you can do to make it safe.
If you put a crosswalk, you gotta have the, you gotta have a, you gotta have a place for the entering, kind of place for, designated place for entering and leaving the crosswalk. Don't see any of those facilities being built out there right now. So I think we probably, we can pay attention to it, and, you know, if it becomes a pedestrian zone, we can serve the sign.
Okay, and I, so please do keep an eye on that. I'm not sure when their projected opening is gonna be. It's gonna happen soon. And I just want it to be as safe as possible on opening day.
I think it's Father's Day weekend.
Okay, that'd be next week?
Soon.
Saturday of Father's Day.
Okay.
That's this one, is that this one?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so thank you for that. Other thing is that I spoke with you at the 151 Route 6 roundabout public hearing. And, you know, my thanks to your team for getting the signage up on the roads, which guaranteed that we had a big turnout. What we didn't have is an opportunity for people at the public hearing to be heard. Ran out of comment forms, and a lot of my constituents who are used to public hearings that are in the format that the Commonwealth of Virginia has identified as public hearings, and as we do here, where people have, you know, three minutes in a form to be able to say what's on their mind about certain things. You know, what they basically had was a listening session, but none of the, none of that's on the record. And because those things aren't on the record, the only opportunity for people that were there to be on the record was to fill out a form. And of course, the forms ran out very soon, which put us in a very strange situation, which was for you all to have to reach out to the people to try to do that. I just want to say that I have some people in my district that are very frustrated because they felt that they didn't have an opportunity for their comments to be on the record, even though they were at the public hearing.
Well, everybody that spoke, and everybody that talked to our people, their name and their, their name, we took down their names and their concerns. And each and every, in fact, I talked to Amanda yesterday, the project manager, and she does, she is recording everybody that spoke to her, everybody that spoke at that call at the, at that meeting with their specific concern. It is being put to record. So, I mean, I don't want to say that they're not being heard. If they, if their name was recorded, and they talked to somebody at VDOT about their comment, their comment was recorded, and it is entered into the meeting minutes. So, I mean, I, I know that's not, having a public forum where you speak, but we still find that that format is, is really, we think is very effective for getting down and meeting the people on the floor, looking at, looking at proposed plans, and having a more meaningful conversation than having someone in a public forum addressing the audience and just not being able to really respond and get down to what's your issue.
Well, you know.
And that's the whole, that's the benefit of that type of forum is, you know, what's your issue? Let's talk about it. Whereas if you have the other way, it's, you know what happens sometimes when you have public forums, and people just won't sugar. So that's my, that's my-
I understand. I know that VDOT has done this for some time, but just for fun, I went onto the Virginia Code, and they actually have, the Virginia Code actually has a definition of public hearing. And by looking at that definition, it does not, you know, what we had was not a public hearing. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to do anything more than voice concerns of the frustrations that were passed on to me.
I'm certainly passing along, Chairman Reed, to our, to our location and design folks and tell them to share, share your sentiment.
Right.
Share your thoughts.
On the plus side, thank you for getting, I, I don't know if you had anything to do with this, but the comment period was extended, so people had longer to get comments in if they chose to do it. So I'm grateful to doing that. Also, I submitted on my own behalf seven pages of comments about possible engineering for the roundabout that would include multimodal engineering so that, given that our comprehensive plan in many, many, many places advocates the connectivity between community centers, communities, and making that a possibility. I know that reengineering a roundabout after it's constructed is gonna be extremely difficult, but getting the engineering right at the beginning so that you can adapt to a multimodal-
Whether that can be included in that now would depend on what was in the small-scale application. It would have to have been in the, in the application. You can't, what, you can't add stuff to it after. And then maybe, it may very well be in there, and if it is, I'm sure it'd be addressed.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to make sure you knew that, so. Because I got that in there. That's all I've got, so thank you. That's, that's it.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay. Next on the agenda, Jeff Brantley's here from Public Works and we have a departmental report from him, so. Thank you, Jeff.
Afternoon, Board. Today I have a maintenance report from May. I won't go through all the day-to-day stuff, I'll just focus on the bigger ticket items. We've had to replace a display panel and window in the older, I believe it's a 2008 Tucson excavator at the transfer station. We also had to replace the front windshield of the 2018 excavator. We used a skid steer and tractor to repair the trail on the east and west side of Blue Ridge Tunnel after the heavy downpours that were ahead. And replaced the breaker in the control panel for capacitor number two at the Rockfish Convenience Center. There are five windows that are broken out at the animal shelter. It's a double pane, so it's not open, it's not open to flow. But I have ordered those windows and I'm waiting on them to come in. As soon as they come in, I will get those replaced. We've had the inspections completed at the courthouse on the sprinkler system and also the inspection and semi-anal service for the elevators. The reuse sheds have been a big focus here recently and I feel like they're a great way for people in the community to assist those in need by donating goods in hopes that they can be repurposed. Unfortunately, due to some of the site's visitors abusing this privilege by blatantly ignoring the rules and displaying constant rude and abusive behavior towards others, we felt it was necessary to monitor these sites more closely. Although all of these sites have been a problem, Rockfish has definitely been the location with the most issues. In hopes to eliminate these issues, we decided to have an intended focus solely on monitoring the reuse shed located at Rockfish. After two weekends of having the shed manned and documenting those abusing the policies, we have sent out warning letters to two separate individuals that were causing the major problems. These letters are a one-time warning, but the next step in the process, having the individuals being banned from all reuse sites, and the next step in the process, having the trespass notice issued by the county. I would also like to thank the Major Brad Medge and the Sheriff's Department for their assistance. After a meeting with myself and county administrator and hearing the problems we've encountered, he decided to have an officer perform a ride-through daily for 30 days to be on the lookout for anyone unmoved. Also have an update on the Larkin property. On June 3rd through the 5th, Billy and I assisted CHA in providing a resistivity testing at Larkin property and hopes for locating groundwater. Four separate lines, 500 meters in length, were laid out on the property with electrodes placed 18 inches in the ground at every 18 feet. Each line was then metered and results from this test should be available this week. Also have some updates for Phase 2 pump station on the Pine River Water and Sewer System. On May 29th, I met with Steve Staten, the representative for Smith and Loveless Pump Stations, Jim Patterson of Patterson Construction, and Jonathan Taylor with the Nelson County Service Authority to discuss, to discuss the replacement of the pump station. While on-site, several issues were found with the previously clove it station and changes have been made so all specifications are correct and agreed upon by both the county and the service authority. The new station will be placed on the existing wet well after a six-foot riser is put into place to bring the wet well to ground level. At this time, there are no signs of water infiltrating the station's wet well and any rehab work that may be needed will be determined upon removing the existing station. While the prep work for the new station is taking place, a pump will be brought in and attached to the discharge line to maintain the flow. This will provide a cost savings when compared to having the sewage pump and haul to the regional sewer plant during the replacement. From civil aid quotes from the contractor and for the pump station. After the station quote is received and the purchase is made, the pump station will take approximately 26 to 32 weeks to build. And that's all I have.
Oh, Mr. Brantley, thank you so much. That was a lot. And it's nice, nice to have you in person telling us all the things that you and we are involved with. Great update.
This needs to be a monthly report. Good job.
Any questions from any of the board members?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So the next item on our agenda about the regional jail renovation financing has been postponed. Candy, did you want to just speak to that briefly?
Sure. I'm gonna go to the podium because I'm gonna be speaking further after that, so. First of all, I just want to thank Mr. Brantley and his crew for all that they do. He's doing an excellent job. He's been with us since, I think, September-ish and he's just really hit the ground running and has accomplished a lot so far, so just want to thank him for all his hard work. Okay, on to the regional jail. So the presentation today was postponed because we got the bids back on the project and they came in about 38% over the estimated cost. So jail staff is working with the apparent low bidder to try to reduce the scope somewhat to bring it back into budget. So from what I know so far, they are focusing on the 1975 areas of the jail to proceed with the renovation on those areas. We'll find out more this Thursday at the jail meeting, so.
Just as a follow-up, just out of curiosity, are we anticipating similar concerns with the other bids that are out on?
I mean, certainly raises some concern. We just have to kind of wait and see how that plays out.
And those due?
Those are due June 26th and they'll be opened on the 27th. Yeah.
Is it the same with the high school renovation? Do you know what the timeline is on that?
They've already, I think they're already under contract.
Yeah, okay. It shouldn't affect that. It's just that one was stable.
Good. Yep. And I believe we have our social services project financing is next on the agenda.
Correct.
And we have Mr. Paul Jacobson from Sanz Anderson. He's our bond counsel and he's going to review the documents for approval today. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Paul Jacobson at the Sanz Anderson Law Firm, County's Bond Counsel. Here to just briefly go over the resolution to approve lease financing for the county capital building project known as the Form of Social Services Building. I think you all are very familiar with the project, its changes throughout the years, but there is now a specific parcel of property that the county's purchased and I believe that was a reference to the bids later this month coming in. And we're here today to present the resolution for consideration for approval by the board because going through the Virginia Resources Authority, their schedule requires an approval on the local level by Friday this week. Following that, the final requested amount is due to VRA in early July. Scheduled to consider the construction contract in July as well. Virginia Resources Authority sells their bonds on the state level, just like the PSA that we dealt with previously not long ago. They sell the bonds on the state level and those proceeds are passed down to localities, which is why they call it the pool and the various localities participate in that. But they, they need, they need the county's approval today in order for them to proceed at their level. They will lock in their interest rates on July 22nd and the tentative closing date is August 5th. I can go, I can go over the resolution very briefly if you would all like, just go through it quickly. First page, of course, it describes the project, describes participating with the Virginia Resources Authority. The county has some interim financing through the Economic Development Authority, which has paid for some preliminary costs, including a portion of the purchase price of the Tanbar property. It describes these documents that are being approved through the resolution, which is a lease from the county to the VRA, a lease back, the financing lease back from the VRA to the county. Describes those documents in detail on page two. The resolution itself approves the documents, authorizes county representatives to sign those documents, as well as other documents sets a maximum principal amount of $9.45 million. With the expected proceeds requested at this point, a maximum of $9 million. The other documents and there will be other documents needed to close the financing are also approved and county representatives are authorized to sign those. Because the Virginia Resource Authority bonds are tax-exempt bonds, some of those requirements flow through down to the county, basically that there not be significant private use of the property, that this is a county building for county use for public purposes. That's four and five and six. On page, on page four, this is a so-called subject to appropriation financing. It's, it will be on the county's budget agenda, so to speak, every year for appropriation. Should the, for some reason, the county decide not to appropriate, that would be a very major event and that's, that's why this is set up in the lease arrangement. The property itself is the collateral and so it's deemed to be essential to the county and the, that's expectations the county would not want to lose that collateral. And so this would appropriate every, every year until the, until the cap was paid. On the last page, page five, approves use of county information in the VRA's official statements, which is like their prospectus that they go to the market with and talk about the various localities that are participating in the pool this summer. And just like the, our Virginia Public School Authority financing, the proceeds will be deposited in the Virginia State Non-Arbitrage Program under the SNAP and will be tracked there and proceeds taken out to pay construction costs as needed. So that's the fiscal view and I see there may be a question.
So the bond market's pretty volatile currently. Of course, I would like it well below 5.5%, but right now that, I mean, we have a bond auction on Friday, we'll have more of a forecast, but do you think we'll even hit that?
I can say that, and this just came out, I saw it on my phone, literally, this came out about, it's an hour and a half ago now. VRA sent some preliminary figures if the, if the bonds were sold today, basically, and I'm sure Grace can get you copies of that if you'd like, but I think it came out to about 4.3, 4.4% in that range as of today. So the maximum is a maximum and of course, it's expected to be, to be lower than that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for your overview of things.
You're welcome. And the question for the board is just moving on adoption of the resolution.
So that's Resolution R 2025-40?
Correct.
Okay. Someone like to make that motion?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution R 2025-40. Nelson County Board Supervisors Resolution approving lease financing of county building capital improvements.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I had a question about the 9.4 million as well. So if you're using the property as collateral, that would mean we paid for it, not through the bond initiative, right?
Well.
We physically own it.
Well, so yes, the county currently owns the property. There was money paid.
Yeah, we shelved it out, yeah.
A portion of that was paid from the proceeds of the interim financing.
Right.
The note. Now, the note will be paid, the balance of the note, whatever it is, at the time that this matter closes, will be paid from this financing. So that, that will, that debt, the current debt, the smaller debt will be gone, the larger debt will be there and with the remainder, remaining funds to pay for the other, other cost expenses.
Okay.
But, but the, yeah, so the issue of collateral is that it's owned by the county. That's, that's the important issue.
Kind of.
Well, how it's, how it's paid for, how it has been paid for is not a collateral issue, it's a, it's a finance issue. Again, the interim will get paid off from the proceeds of this long-term financing.
Okay. What is the cost to the county? Say we get our bids back and it is substantially higher than 9.4 million. What's the cost to the county to do all this again or, I mean, we're paying you to do this. Paying you to run the bonds, because we're doing that before we know what the bids are from what it sounds like. Does that make sense?
Right.
Sorry, I was just gonna add that we'll have the bids back before the actual financing closes, before any funds are to start.
So we can put a hard stop on plowing forward if things go awry?
I believe so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. There's no further questions? Take a roll call, Booth.
Dr. Liggins?
Yes.
Mr. Farm?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Okay. Next, we have a presentation on the Pine River Water and Sewer Rate Structure.
As Chairman Reed mentioned, we'll have a presentation on our Pine River Water and Sewer System, otherwise known as PRWS in this presentation, on the service and, service and usage and connection fees, which the board asked staff to report on in order to get a conversation going about possibly adjusting those fees. Just a little bit of background on the Pine River Water and Sewer System. The system was built using USDA and Rural Development Loan, HUD, Community Development Block Grant, or CBPG funds, EPA State and Tribal Assistance Grant Funds, and Southeast Rural Community Assistance Project, Inc. Grant Funds, to address issues with well-inseptic systems in the interest of public health in the Pine River community. This system includes a water and sewer force main along Route 56 West from the wastewater pump station, down to Route 151, serving Rose Mill Road and Waddell Lane to the south of the Y intersection with Route 151, serving Loseville Road, Firehouse Road, Shady Lane, Pine River Drive, and Whispering Pine Drive. This also extends north of the Y intersection of 56 West and 151, up Route 151 to the Henderson Store area, just southwest of the Tye River. The sewer-only service is provided to parts of Route 151, which is north of the 56 West and 151 Y intersection, St. James Place and St. James Church Road, Buffalo Mines, Claypool Road, Fisher Town Road, Robert Cattle Lane, Loving Drive, Cow Hollow Road, and Jennings Creek Road. The CBPG and CERCAP grant funds require project-specific thresholds of low and moderate income benefits of 51% and 30% respectively. So HUD defines low and moderate income as a household that is at or below 80% of the median income for the area as annually adjusted. I'd like to note the system USDA and RD loan. I'd like to note, the system USDA and RD loan debt less retired in 2019. The current system as of March 25 has 206 customers. These are five water-only, 18 sewer-only, 83 with sewer and grinder pump, and then 100 customers that have water, sewer, and a grinder pump. As the board is aware, increases in system expenditures beginning in FY 2020 have been occurring in capital, maintenance supplies, and equipment and repair line items. For FY 2020 through FY 25, as of May year-to-date, and the budgeted FY 26 expenditures in these categories total $1.5 million. The last water and wastewater service and usage fee increase was in 2013. This table just kind of breaks out the expenditures by fiscal year into the major items of capital expenditures, maintenance supplies and equipment, and maintenance and repairs. And primary reasons for a lot of these have to do with grinder pumps. We installed a granulated active carbon unit in '21, and then we had further pump station and grinder pump issues going down through year-to-date, which we are planning to replace that, that pump station that Mr. Brantley was speaking of, and that's the capital expenditure listed for FY '26. So the board kind of asked us to look at our system rates and compare them to the service authority rates. So this table here shows the basic service and usage fees for water and sewer, and also the grinder pump fee. The left column, that's kind of a beige color, is the service authority rates. The middle column is a wintergreen rate that is different from the other systems, and then on the right is our Piney River Water and Sewer Rates that are in effect since 2013. And the rate in red, $80.15 for sewer usage for the service authority, is the rate that will be effective July 1st for them. The next table just compares the connection fees between the service authority rates and our current rates for Piney River Water and Sewer. Those are about double of what we have currently since 2013. So that's another difference to consider there. So what we did to start with was try to look at a phased approach. We looked at a five-year approach, a four-year approach, and a three-year approach. This chart shows the five-year approach, which would provide for equal increases each year. If you look at the five-year differential column, that's the green column, that shows the differential for each year that would be added to the rates year over year in order to achieve a target rate of the same rate that the service authority is at today. Definitely should note that service authority rates over the next five years may also increase, which will provide for a little bit of a moving target, if that's the direction the board would like to take.
The rates you're suggesting now from the service authority, weren't they just about to go up? So is that their new rate?
So this includes the new rate that will be effective July 1st, and that's the base sewer usage rate of $80.15 per 4,000 gallons a month. So, let's see, if you look at year one, our rate would go from 68.50 to 85.54, and that's the minimum total with a grinder pump. And then, the minimum total without the grinder pump would go to $73.29 from $59.50. Percentage-wise, it'd be about a 25% increase for the minimum total with grinder pump, and then without would be about 23%. If you look at, if, if those had been incremental increases, let's say, over 12 years since 2013, the with grinder pump rate is about 2% per year, and then the without is about 1.9% per year, if that makes sense. And then this chart just goes on to show you what the rates would be year two, three, four, and five, adding that five-year differential amount to each subsequent year to get to the current service authority rates. Are there any questions about this format? Because the next couple slides use the same one, so. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the four-year phase-in slide. Same scenario, except the four-year differential is a little bit higher, because you're just spreading out the increases over four years instead of five. So the four-year differential amount that would be added to each subsequent year would be $21.30 for the minimum total with grinder pump, and then without would be $17.24. And then you see that each subsequent year out to year four, what those rates would look like.
How often does the service authority usually raise rates?
Every year.
Hmm?
I think, Ernie, it was raised once in four years ago. Every time we do a capital improvement, there's always some type of rate increase.
Because the debt surface goes up.
Correct.
Yeah. But, so it's, you know, it depends on a variety of things, but, I mean, we know that Livingston is something that's in the equation, so there's prob, there, there may be a likelihood at some point, if we're going to be increasing the infrastructure at Livingston, to, to look at this again for the service authority.
I think ultimately, that four or five-year thing, I mean, likely, the other two are going to adjust themselves maybe once in those four years. So it's really not a four-year, it's like a six-year to get really caught up, if I were to speculate.
Yeah, if this was the strategy you all wanted to pursue, we would certainly make adjustments as the service authority adjusted their rates.
What percent increase did they go up this last time?
I can't remember what the percentage increase was for that $80.15 rate.
Yeah.
I don't have that in front of me.
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me either. We can find out on the chat.
We get 15.
15? We have two service authority numbers here. Okay. If it's okay to move on, looking at the percentage change overall, if you split that out between 12 years, an incremental increase would be 2.6% on the total with grinder pump, and then 2.4% with the total without the grinder pump. Next, we have the three-year phase-in, and the three-year differential there would add $28.40 per year for the minimum total with the grinder pump, and then without, $22.98. And then that differential percentage spread out between the 12-year incrementally would be 3.5% per year and 3.2% per year. And this is strictly just looking at minimum water and sewer usage, the 4,000 gallons minimum per month. This last sheet's very small, but it just shows each scenario together on one page. That's just more for you all to reference later on. So looking at these rates, just did a little research on what is considered an affordable water and sewer bill. Found the general consensus in water use thresholds for water and sewer affordability in the United States suggests that spending more than 3% to 4.5% of your household income on drinking water and wastewater bills is considered a high burden or unaffordable. So under 4.5% is a threshold that the EPA also uses for combined drinking water and wastewater bills to be considered affordable, and that's comprised of 2.5% for drinking water and 2% for wastewater. So then, just decided to take a look at what the county's median household income was, also compare it to our project area, which is primarily Piney River and Roseland, and, let's see, I used the 2021 numbers because that, that's what I could find to be most consistent for the county and then for these areas by zip code. Using 2023 Census Bureau data, really wasn't that feasible, because when you broke it down to the zip code areas, it was based on survey data, and the standard deviation was just way too big.
Was it?
So I just decided to go with the 2021, and that way I could compare apples and apples between the county's median household income and then the Piney River-Roseland areas. So that said, the 2021 median household income based on the Census Bureau was $74,415. I did a calculation for that low and moderate income level, which is 80% of the median income for the area, that's a by my HUD. So for that median household income, the 80% LMI would be $59,532. The 2021 median household income for zip code 22964, Piney River, was $77,328, 80% of that, $61,862. And then the 2021 median household income for 22967 of Roseland was $71,502, and the 80% LMI, $57,202. And you'll see why that's important in just a sec. So took those numbers and compared those, or applied the EPA affordability metrics, compared with the monthly service authority-based water and sewer usage fees. So on the left column, we have the median household income for 2021, showing for Nelson County, Piney River, Roseland, and then also the 80% median household income, or low and moderate income, median household incomes there on the left, showed what a 2% drinking water maximum EPA cost per month would look like based on that median household income, and then what the service authority monthly base rate is. Also did the same for the wastewater using 2.5%, and then a combined total of 4.5%. So the 4.5% numbers are in the red, on the one, two, three, the fourth column over on your right. So for Nelson County, a 4.5% maximum affordability would be $279.06, and that's combined drinking water and wastewater. For the 80% median household income for the county, the 4.5% or affordability rate was 20, 20, $223.25, sorry. And that compares to the service authority monthly base rate, which is our target rate for these examples, of $128.45. If you add on the grinder pump fee of $25.25, then that gives you a maximum total of $153.70, which is 2.48% using the county's median household income, and 3.1% using the low to moderate income of 80% of that. So that's pretty, pretty well, well, not well below, but it is below the 4.5% maximum affordability that the EPA prescribes. So did the same scenario for zip code 22964, Piney River, and 22967 in Roseland, and you can kind of see how that also plays out. To summarize, for Piney River, the water, sewer, and grinder pump fee combined together of $153.70 is 2.38% of the median household income in Piney River, and 2.98% of the low to moderate income of Piney River. Going down to Roseland, those combined water, sewer, and grinder pump fees of $153.70 bear out to be 2.58% of the Roseland median household income, and 3.22% of the low to moderate household income for Roseland. Any questions on this one before? Now, it is important to note that there will be some households, obviously, who will be financially overburdened by any rate increases. This is just your average median household numbers. Well, just to summarize all of that, since FY 2020, there's been increased system expenditures related to the Phase II pump station and grinder pumps. We've had significant capital investment in the system to be made to replace the Phase II pump station in FY '26. Our rates have not increased since 2013. Rate increases have been proposed and discussed over the years with no action taken. I just believe this has more to do with the board just being sensitive to economic timing, and just historical low to moderate income status of the customer base in those areas. But I do believe, we do need to look at increasing the rates for this system. Increasing the system water and wastewater rates to equal the current rates of NCSA is considered affordable, based on those EPA definitions of affordability and the median household income of the affected areas of the counties. Now, there are other fees and charges to consider for equalizing, provided another fee schedule that looks at the water and sewer availability fees, yard hydrant fees, unauthorized water sewer use fees, copies of the county's rules and regulations, new service opinion fees, voluntary disconnect, reconnect fees for water, and misuse damage fee minimums. But those are not quite as critical as the base usage and connection fees, but those could be addressed as well.
How many new connections do we generally have in a year?
I think...
In Piney River?
Not a lot. I'm saying under a handful.
I, I did one in 2022.
Yeah. Very, very few.
Yes. So our next steps, I think, are have questions and answers, discussions of the information presented. If you'd like for staff to develop other rate increase options, we could look at any scenarios you might suggest, or look at lower initial increases graduating to a higher phase-in approach rather than equal, equal increments of phasing. And then, if that were the case, we could come back and present other rate increase options in July, and look to authorize a public hearing on whatever rate increases you all decide upon. It would be good to know what the effective date is, and then how much notice we want to give to customers before any rate increases, so we need to consider that. Then we would just conduct the public hearings, and then notify the customer base based on that effective date. That's all I have right now.
I have an answer to your question, by the way.
Okay, excellent.
So, this is from the minutes of the Service Authority meeting in April, when we authorized the public hearing. "The 15% base sewer rate increase for all sewer customers effective July 1st would be reflected on the July-August billing statement. The operational and maintenance expenses have increased by 40% in the current fiscal year. Quotes received to replace the sewage pumping station at the Livingston Sewer Plant behind Calvary Baptist Church," so that's included in this. "The Livingston Ridge Apartment Sewer Pumping Station, and the Highland Sewage Pumping Station at Wintergrain..." The Livingston Ridge Apartment Sewer Pumping Station and the Highland Sewage Pumping Station at Wintergreen this fiscal year are estimated to be around six hundred thousand dollars. And, uh, this proposed sewer rate increase is in response to those two things. And it was a fifteen percent increase. As Grace noted, uh, the previous sewer rate was, uh, or the current sewer rate is sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents. It would go up to eighty dollars and fifteen cents.
And do you know how much notice they gave people?
Uh, the notice for public hearing went out in April seventeenth for the, uh, for the May meeting.
Oh, so not great, oh, okay.
So it was approved May fifteenth-ish, somewhere mid-May, correct?
Yeah.
So it assumed.
Two months.
Yeah.
But maybe only one month notice really if it went out with bills.
Right, right.
I don't think that's fair. I think a longer notice is fair. Especially for how. I think a longer notice is fair. Just put a net up.
I agree with that, I mean.
At least three months.
A- as you, as it relates to our community members who are, are living off of social security and whatnot. You know, I received multiple, uh, communications from folks, especially in the village who said, you know, I couldn't price this in my life yet. But I, whatever we do with this needs to have adequate and show the phased approach so that everybody's not surprised over the next four years with whatever we're gonna do. Um, I, I, the only concern that I have is we're gonna begin this process as more, uh, projects commence in the various districts Gladstone, Livingston, Skyler, even, um, the Wintergreen portion, you know, I think, I'm not saying necessarily we have to be more aggressive, but we figure, need to figure out how to be cognizant of that as those rates, because it's not gonna take four years, it'll probably take six to seven to get caught up to where rates are kind of going.
I think the important thing is to start.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely. I mean, not, i- it isn't, it isn't fair to the constituents around them that are paying these higher rates and they're getting kind of a great rate starting in 2013, right? It hasn't changed since thirteen?
Thirteen.
So, and then with that being said is hopefully while we get this addressed, seeing about what cer- um, the service authority would be in the takeover of it as we figure out this process.
Well, we'll have a little more developments at our next meeting because we have a meeting tomorrow with the service authority.
Got it.
Maybe.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's definitely intertwined, those two things, but, um, I think we need to address our rates regardless.
Oh, absolutely. So what kind of, so directed from us is, obviously, I think a public hearing is pertinent. Is that statutory as well?
Yes, we have to have a public hearing, so you have to amend our ordinance.
Thirty-day notice is state requirement, right?
I guess it's roughly thirty days.
And whatever amount we advertise, we can't go above that rate, we can only go less than that rate.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, um, I did see where, I think it was Prince William County, they advertised, um, rates for the next three years. Um, I don't know if you're interested in something like that or if you just wanna look at it every year. You know, because things do change.
Yeah, I think it does. I think it makes sense to, um, to, to do something for year one. Certainly get something in for year one. Um, but I really do think that based on the discussions and the meetings that are gonna be coming forth, that the picture will be clearer going forward. I don't expect that, um, there's gonna be much cost savings going, you know, going fut- going into the future, but then to decide how best to phase it in and consider if there's any kind of relief that might be considered as well. So those are, you know, those, those are things that we can, I think, consider as we go. But I think getting the first year's public hearing changing would be really good to have done while the discussions are going on. I don't think it's a good idea to wait until, you know, we find some common ground with, between the service authority and the board of supervisors as how to, how to deal with the long-term.
Right.
Take over of the system.
Do you all like these scenarios and splitting the differential being the same increment each year going out, at least to start with, or, um, let's see, there's only three, that's kind of hard to see, but, would you rather start out smaller and get bigger or?
I like the three here.
Do you have any other scenarios in mind?
There's no way I'll support three-year. I mean, it took us twelve years to dig this hole. And my constituents should not suffer unduly because of our delays in acting. We've been talking about this since I've been on the board and I know it's been talked about before. I find it interesting that we delayed it to kick the can because of the financial situation of the residents of the district and yet we're showing numbers there that I wanna know where the, those numbers came from, because that doesn't, I ride down the road every day, you ride down that road every day, I sure as hell don't know where those people live. I challenge anybody to drive down Shady Lane, Jenny's Creek, down on the bottom, up Lobosville Road and see where anybody can afford, um, for the most part. I mean, granted, there are a few exceptions in the community, but, um, this is gonna be an undue burden for several members of our community. And, um, we, whatever we do, the longest we can stretch it out, I think, is the most fair because we took our time fixing it. The longest we can stretch it out, we should. And we also have got to have, um, something in the works for people who are, um, burdened the most, the low to moderate income. We need to figure out something, some sort of way to help because, you know, yeah, make my bill a hundred and fifty-three dollars a month in the year five, it's fine. But there's gonna be people who are struggling to pay eighty-five dollars and fifty-four cents already today, you know?
That is true.
So we, we, we can't, um, jump into this on a short-term fix, um, because like I said, we took our time getting here.
So that's the five-year that we have a, at minimum for me.
Yeah, um, I, you know, I actually have a different perspective. Um, you know, twelve and thirteen years of no rate increases, I think, uh, to try to reach some kind of parity would probably take a larger bite the first year and then decrease over time, um, in terms of the percentages. Because for such a long time, there haven't been any increases and they're, you know, they're, I mean, Mr. Parr said what the causes of that is, but, um, but I think that the recognition that, um, that something needs to be done, kind of to compensate for that in the short term and then, uh, look at it again after we've had some discussions on this. And so I would, I would be in favor of the, either the three or the four-year amount just for year one and, um, and revisit it, make sure that it's, that it's revisited.
Make sure four-year, year four.
Let's just remember, every dollar that we increase right here is one dollar less that they'll be able to spend in the food line. Okay, so I'm, I'm doing a really good job right now of not expressing my frustration, um, so I'll just leave it at that.
I have a concern about wanting to revisit next year. We have, uh, historically not done a good job circling back. Uh, so I would like to lay out a plan. Yes, we can circle back and change said plan, but there is a path to get out of this problem. Um, because when I brought this up, it was talked about for seven years before I became on the board and nothing happened. So, plan laid, yes, we can change it, but historically, we have trouble circling back.
I think we'll, I think that, um, the likelihood that there's going to be some, uh, some coming together of the service authority and the county on the Pine River system within the next year, um, really warrants that we take a short-term approach now and then during those discussions, we look a lot more critically at what we wanna be doing going forward because we will have numbers that will be perhaps different and we will also have to consider, you know, whatever, uh, costs and benefits might be factored into it to both, you know, both the county and the service authority. In other words, the, the whole landscape's gonna change. We hope the rates are not gonna, you know, are, are, are gonna be something that we can deal with, but we're gonna have to deal with them at that time anyway. If we lock in some kind of rates now, um, subject to that, um, I think that we'd be setting ourselves up for, you know, having to revisit it in a year anyway.
I feel the service authority is less likely to entertain any discussion with us if we don't have a long-term plan in place. It, it's added security that we are truly putting those wheels in motion. Not just for one year, but we have a plan and we're gonna execute it. That's my defense on that. What are your thoughts, since this is your district? No, no, on connection fees? Because that's part of this too, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Connection fees get lumped in to, for the most part, get lumped into a purchase and are less of a burden upfront. I think those need to be eased into as well. We can't take, we can't bite the whole apple at one time. We need to take little bites.
Well, this is not affecting current homeowners, in my opinion. This is affecting people that purchase, build and connect. So.
That is true, but that doesn't exclude existing residents who may be making some sort of change, um, would, would be impacted. But I'm less, um, concerned about the overall impact of our current residents with this than I am the other schedule. That's accurate speaking.
The one thing I would add really to the Pine River system, when you do, um, a sewer connection, you have to add in the grinder pump aspect. I think in part some reason, I'm assuming, some of the rationale for having the lower sewer connection fees because of the upfront cost to install a grinder pump and all of that related to it. I mean, those installs can cost well over, you know, eight to ten grand just with that on, including the, uh, ten to twelve grand, just depends on how much the equipment's going for, um, related to the sewer. So there's probably some rationale to that effect, but I'm not sure, I wasn't there at that. Um, that would be one of the only sides of that where I would be cautionary because those grinder pumps and there's a lot of folks who have to install those, they're not cheap.
I mean, I'm, I know at least two, maybe three instances of current residents who were trying to make a change and couldn't because of the current connection fee schedule, much less an increase, so I, I know it has an impact.
Um, I've, I've got a question for, um, for Mr. Parr and Dr. Ligon. Do you think that any of the discussions with the service authority that you're having in your meeting tomorrow might affect our decision on this? I don't know that it will, I'm just wondering what you think.
It's really hard to say.
Yeah. Well, what, you know, so what we could possibly do would be delay it until the next meeting.
Right.
We would have a little more information.
I will say this, um, I'm gonna be hard-pressed to support any transfer of ownership until we have a long-term plan for this because, no offense, but I don't trust that when a transfer of ownership takes place, that it's not gonna be something worse than this unless we already have a plan in place. I have very little, have a lot of fear that that may be a problem if we don't have something in place.
So, so you're thinking that whatever we might either decide today, tomorrow or soon is going to affect the negotiations with the service authority?
It's, it's gonna affect my vote on what, how we move forward with that, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So. I feel our decision will affect meetings with the service authority, yes.
Yes.
They will never take on.
This.
An entity that charges half what they charge.
Well, that's what the negotiations are gonna have to do to try to figure out.
Well, they laid out apparently almost a decade ago what the challenges were to merging them and I'm not sure what the steps were. I'm not sure what the steps were, it's worse, actually.
Yep.
Um, so deep down, y'all know what it's gonna take. All right.
I think generally I, I would be interested in how the discussions go tomorrow if we wanna make a decision in July.
I agree with him, I think the longer term thing hurts less.
Sure.
It's still gonna hurt.
We'll look at longer than five years.
No. Because we're gonna have to adjust, they're gonna go up again and adjustments would have to be made.
Right.
What if, would it be possible to look at, and I'm just picking six because we took us twelve years to get here, what if we took six-year plan and some factored in some sort of inflation, not just a flat? Um, and I'm not saying heavy load in the beginning, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that instead of just an even increase as we go, maybe have a curve going up over the six years.
Right.
To help factor in, you know, have an inflationary factor. Some of that higher math, and I'm not good at.
Even inflationary factor like a two percent each year or?
Something like that.
More gradually higher.
No, the percentages will take care of the, the, the increase. I mean, a, a flat percentage of two percent this year and then two percent next year, it's gonna give you a curve.
Yes.
I think if we went up on rates, we would have to give a significant, or on connection rates, a significant amount of time warning. Thinking six to eight months.
Absolutely, I was gonna, at least six months, yeah, I was, that's where I was thinking too. Because you've got somebody who, maybe they just purchased a piece of property and they're not gonna be able to build for twelve months or s- you know, we just, we need to factor that in, what, what might be going on. But, um, but yeah, I'm, I don't have the heartburn over connection fees that I do over this.
Another thing to consider, of course, is, um, is, are the, whatever our decision might be, you know, now or next, next month or whatever, um, will those, you know, in your discussions with the service authority be retroactive? Will they have to be honored in the long-term? Can they be renegotiated? I think that's the piece of all this as well.
Yeah, for me, if, if what I heard, what I wanna make sure I heard, because I've got a lot of things bouncing around right now, I wanna make sure I heard what you said, that what we come up with next month, because it's not gonna be today, on whatever schedule we pick, you're saying that it's gonna be firm in writing with whoever the new owner might be down the road. Yes, I'm, I'm going into this assuming that whatever this schedule ends up being has to be incorporated in that negotiation. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not willing to sign off on that, but I, I, I respect your, your thoughts on it, but I think, you know, it's gonna.
It might be in the water business for a while.
Yeah, well, you know, trying to, trying to figure out how it's all gonna work out for all parties involved, you know, is gonna be a challenge for sure.
So, Mr. Chair, are we gonna table this till next month?
Believe so.
Okay. I was gonna suggest a rest for a break.
Before we postpone, keep table.
Table.
Postpone.
Um, so it's at the July meeting, we'll bring back a six-year plan, factoring in the inflation of two percent after the first year out to year six.
And then if we can just, I don't know how, I don't know if it's something you work with, um, somebody in community development or who we talk to, but we need to figure out a way to help some of those, that this is a greater burden. I don't know how that works, but.
Does Water Authority have anything in place? I don't recall, Mr. Reed.
Not that I know of.
Uh, I mean, generally they would go to DSS or Nelson County Community Foundation, right?
Yeah.
Uh, so we have those, and we fund those people, so.
I know that, I do know that for. I know that, I do know that for, for those people that are customers, the Service Authority cannot stop service. And so when you have a lien against someone, they have to deal with the lien, but that's all.
And they do, I know they do offer, and we offer as well in this system, payment plans for those folks that get behind. But if they, if they do not do a payment plan, then the next option is a treasuries lien on the property.
Is there a payment plan on connectivity?
That I would have to look into. I'm not sure about that one.
I don't think there is.
I don't think so.
I don't think so. But I know a lot of, a lot of times, not all the time, but a lot of times that's a builder who folds that in.
Yeah, it's part of your mortgage.
Right, right.
Yeah. Thank you, Candy.
Okay. We're going to take a brief recess and we'll get back.